All right, council, please come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, can you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Randerhorst.
Here.
Ansar.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hapkin.
Here.
For.
Here.
Okay, before we start tonight's meeting, there's an issue that I'd like to address. It's surfaced in the last couple of days. So I'm referencing a newspaper article from September 9th in the Knoxville Journal Express. There was an article about the total debt in the city of Pella. And the article goes through and lists the total debt in the city of Pella. What was interesting about the article is it doesn't appear that anyone at the city was contacted about it. And so it's basically just a listing of debt. Ironically enough, it shows how debt has increased from 2019 to 2023. So I was curious as to why this was in the newspaper, you know, at that time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to address that. My name is Steve Woodhouse.
You can, but let me finish.
Yes, sir.
So anyway, I was curious because we've had no discussions about total debt in Pella. We've had no debt discussions. And so I thought, now, why does this show up now? So I was curious about it. Well, I found my answer very shortly thereafter with a Facebook post that talked about, you know, referencing this Marion County Express. It says, "No more lies or misleading comments on our outstanding debt." No one, we hadn't even talked about our total debt. And then they also says, "We are well over 50% of our debt levy," which is an untrue statement. And so I realized why it was here. It's an election season, and it's a campaign push to try to disparage or whatever what we've done as a city council over the last three years. As I said, ironically, it only talked about debt from 2019 to 2023. Seems a little suspicious to me. So I want to address the debt that's taken place in the last three years because this newspaper article gives no context whatsoever. It just listed that and talks about how it is by fund and utility and all of that. So Steve, if you could move out of the way so we can see. We have a list of projects, major projects that have been done in the city of Pella since 2019. Now, obviously, the largest project we've undertaken as a city and as a community is the fiber optic, which is a $20 million project that was approved by the citizens to do. And I might add, we have, our staff has done an unbelievable job of installing that. All of the pre cash flows and everything showed we need 2,000 customers to make it a viable utility that would pay its own debt and run at a profit. As of today, we are at 2,508, I think, installs. So this is well on its way to being a financial win for the city of Pella. But there's $20 million of debt attached to that. So of the increase in debt, 20 million of that comes from a new utility that we started. I think maybe in fairness, there may have been some discussion about that fact. If you just listed that and put a total, oh, 20 million comes from a utility. Here's the other projects. There was also a DNR mandated project at the wastewater for $7.4 million. We did an infrastructure TIF bond for Lally to do some infrastructure around Lally. We also did a financial incentive for Prairie Ridge for Smash Park Chick-fil-A. That was $2 million. And then we've also done some street upgrades. So we've spent 30, we've invested 30, almost $35 million over the last three years. So Mandy, can you go to the debt slide? So if you go 2019 to 2023, here's our increase in debt. Again, if you look at the article in the paper and you read the Facebook post, it sounds like there's something nefarious going on or that this is something that's out of whack here that we're trying to hide. Let me tell you that every one of those debt issues that's happened since 2019 was approved in this room by every person that's sitting on this city council in a public meeting after a public hearing. So if you don't know what the city of Pella's debt is, that's on you, not on us. It's here, and any citizen of Pella that wants to walk into our city clerk's office and find this information, it is available, it's there. So to try to play this off like we've been out there on this spending spree, wasting a lot of taxpayers' money, is just not true. And I will also add that some of that debt, now, there's good debt, there's bad debt. We have some great debt because we borrowed money for some of these infrastructures, projects, at 1.8% interest for 20 years. Now, right now, you can take your cash to the bank and get 4.5% to 5% on a CD. So if you don't understand how that is good debt, talk to your financial advisor or send me an email and come to my office and I'll explain it to you. Because that is great debt on projects that are big projects for this community. And so this idea that we're spendthrifts and that we're piling up all this debt is just not true. And in fact, if I, and Mike can verify this, on our fiber project, we were not originally, didn't have money in the budget to do a second trunk line to put redundancy in the system. But I think we so efficiently got it installed with our staff doing a lot of the work. We ended up with enough money from our debt service to now be putting a trunk line in partnership with Indianola, from Indianola to Pella. The original one came from Grinnell to Pella. But now we have redundancy in our system so that if somebody cuts a line on the north end of town, we don't lose service because we have a line coming from the other direction. And so we, with that debt, were able to do that right now. And so I just want to be very, very clear. It's election time, the tactics that happen out there, it's a purposeful trying to create chaos, trying to create doubt, all of this, just beware. Just beware. Come to the forums, you're going to hear facts. This kind of stuff, we don't need in a campaign. If you can't tell the truth, and if you can't be honest, and if you can't give all the facts, then I just appreciate you not talking.
Are you through?
Go ahead, Steve.
Are you through attacking me now, Don?
I'm not attacking you. You didn't, I know where these numbers came from for you, Steve. I know where they came from. You put them in the paper. I would have appreciated a phone call or something to say, to put some context in it because you throw it out there, people aren't going to follow up. They're going to read it. And when you read the article, it appears like we're drowning in debt as a city, like we're in some financial crisis, which is, we are so sound financially, it's incredible. So I'll allow you to speak briefly.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I ran two articles about city of Pella debt because I've had people ask me about how indebted the city is as there have been many discussions about geo-bonds and other potential debt for future projects. So I was just trying to find out. The first article I wrote referenced numbers available from the Iowa Department of Management through the end of, well, through June 30th, 2022. The second article references numbers I received from your new finance director, and that information all came directly from him. And the article did, the second article, I don't remember as long enough the first one. I don't remember if I mentioned it, or I apologize if I didn't. But the most recent article, I believe the one you're pointing out, points out that most of the debt is from utilities and projects that are repaid by users of the service fees, you know, service fees from users. However, there is still the other outstanding debt that I was just trying to point out. And I did point out that a lot of that was tied back to Pella Fiber and other projects. And I'm not attacking Pella Fiber. I apologize if you thought it that way. And it was not meant to be a campaign tactic. I was just trying to answer a question, do what I can. As far as Pella Fiber, you know, I'm on Pella Fiber constantly. I have a great partnership with the city so far with Pella Fiber. I think it's great. I've even promoted it in a couple of articles about talking about the expansion and growth of Pella Fiber over the past several months. And, but no, the facts, the facts I presented are facts, or at least according to official departments like Department of Management and the Finance Office here in City of Pella. So like I say, I wasn't quite prepared.
Your numbers are 100% correct.
Then why did you say that you're looking for the truth? Because that applies to being correct or wrong.
What I was responding to was a Facebook post that we were hiding behind our debt. And that's not true. And the other thing that wasn't true in the post was we're at 50% of our debt capacity. That is untrue because none of that utility debt counts towards our debt capacity. What's our debt capacity like? It's roughly $50 million. That's based on property values and taxable values and all that. It's roughly $50 million. Between our general obligation debt and our TIF debt, we're at 7. some million right now. So we have $43 million of debt capacity that we could use for general obligation bonds. And that's important because later, when we start talking about the recreation center, our whole discussion has been about a $17 million TIF or a sales revenue bond. That would count against our debt. So we have plenty of room to do that. Anyway, thanks, Steve. I was not, I didn't mean to attack you. I was, I think that, I would have appreciated some context with the numbers.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on. Can I get motion? Steve, we're moving on. We're moving on.
You got the name of my newspaper wrong. I would like to.
Okay, I'm sorry. Correct that, please.
Yes. Don, Mr. Mayor first referred to this as the Knoxville Journal Express. The Knoxville Journal Express has been long dead for years. My newspaper is the Marion County Express, the official paper of Pella. So thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Vansh, Randerhorst. Any discussions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randerhorst.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hapkin.
Yes.
For.
Yes.
DeYoung. DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, at this time, we have an opportunity for a public forum. So anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. And in the interest of time, of everybody's time, please try to limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Oh, sorry.
Kyle Nelson, 804 East Independence. First of all, I'd like to thank each of you for your service to the city of Pella. I'm sure being on the council at times feels like a thankless job. So I think, thank you for your perseverance and vision for what Pella could be. A little over 10 years ago, I had the privilege of helping raise funds for what is now the Pella Sports Park. For the 10 years prior to that, a committed group of volunteers simply saw a need, had a vision for something better for the youth of our community, and had a desire to make Pella a better place to work and play. It was a wonderful project where the city, the people of Pella, and industry came together. Were there naysayers? Of course, there always is for those who are resistant to change. Did the group move forward anyway? They sure did. They spent countless hours reviewing potential sites, visiting other facilities, designing our current facility, and raising funds to make the Pella Sports Park the premier venue that it is today. Is it perfect? No, not yet. Do some still long for the neighborhood ballparks where kids gather spontaneously? Yep. But overall, it's an outstanding facility where literally thousands of our kids and kids from around the region have the pure joy of playing baseball, softball, soccer, football, and running cross country in a family-friendly environment. And many in this room have gotten to watch their kids, their grandkids, their nieces and nephews experience that joy. What great memories. With these games come crowds. Some are just for the night, others are for the whole weekend. I would love to know the economic impact the Pella Sports Park has generated in the past decade. Let's ask the businesses, the lifeblood of any small community, if they are positively impacted when a tournament is in town. Let's take it one step further and ask Marion County if they are positively impacted by the revenue that these events, these events and Pella in general generate. I'm confident the answer is yes. And now we have the opportunity for another great public partner, a public-private partnership. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the Pella Rec Center. This project will be a difference maker for our community, for youth and adults alike. I ask that you remain diligent in your planning to make it become a reality. Thank you.
Risky, 76218 Place. I just, I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but after I caught the tail end of a scolding about debt, you know, there is debt and there's debt. And you can call it all you want, whether it is in the utilities. We just got $5 million from the utilities. So when you have utility debt, that all needs to be paid back. And I'm, you know, I've heard it several times before that we have free money now. There is no such thing as free money. It all has to be paid back. And I think as council members, you guys are called to be prudent and self thinkers, supporters, and in the best interest of your constituents. And I guess we'll just have to see. Sometimes, you know, I've heard things about wisdom and advice and stuff, but, and I think that if you put prudence to that, I don't know that the outcome really is not what's going on. I don't know. Please, please consider.
Harry Urwick, 725 Countryside Lane in Pella. Mayor and city council, one comment about your comment. Mr. Mayor, I would agree with you. The enterprise funds are being well-served. I'm concerned more with the general fund, if you will, the general side of the ledger, which is property tax, LOSST, et cetera, in my comments. So I provided input to the council during the budget cycle. So you know that I have concerns about debt and also the size of the project as well as the operating costs. I've talked to the city administrator about that. On the update plan, it's substantially changing, and the funding sources that are proposed are changing in a couple of places, and I'd like to address those because I don't think we'll get a chance later, as far as I know. On the community center reservation, I've been very supportive of doing that project, and I believe we should move forward with it. The funding is a little different than what was in the CIP. $500,000 of the capital fund is, I think, is being substituted by the LOST bonds that's suggested in the report. Before, it was $5 million, now it's 5.5. It's not a big deal, but it's just, I think we need to take attention when there's change. On the university drive, university, the street extension, concerned with that. The price has gone up and what the timing is and when it's needed. If the rec center goes, then that road is probably more needed. But it's being proposed now to be what's called an excess corporate purpose bond, which is a special kind of a bond under the tax code that allows the council to approve bonds, geo-type bonds without a public vote. And that's one of the exemptions that's in the code. So I would hope that the FA to Iowa, the city administrator, would address that because that's a concern that we're going to have potentially $7.6 million in debt that would not be voter approved, would be probably going on the property taxes and additional levy above the maximum because that's why it's allowed. So again, concern, it's solvable, but it's a concern. In terms of the indoor rec center, again, the cost has gone up. So now we have an updated scaled back facility. And my prior experience as a project engineer, not engineer, but manager, I've had to do that before. So the staff and the consultants are doing as good a job as they can trying to bring it back to the budget. But again, the concern I have is if you build it in pieces, it's going to cost more because of design changes and administrative costs, et cetera. So that needs to be carefully looked at. Will the bond that I talked about earlier be considered to be put on the property tax? That's a question I think should be answered tonight because of what I said before. Also, in the CIP, if you look out at the end of it, there's more geo-bonds that are proposed. So that this isn't the end of terms of debt. And that's my concern is how much we can carry. I think the staff have a good panel on that. Unfortunately, the last, this year and the last year, property tax and LOST have been pretty much leveled. They aren't going up like they were over the years, if I'm correct. Again, if I'm incorrect, I'll be glad to be updated and reeducated. So my suggestions to the council are to proceed with the design of the rec center and move that project forward, not to consider an essential corporate purpose bond unless a voter approved approval is included in that direction. Because I think that our voters need to look at that if there's going to be additional cost. And do not proceed with the university street extension project unless that bond is approved by a vote. Finally, I had discussed in my input, in a written input, about doing a comprehensive cash flow analysis. Possibly the FA will address that tonight because it's usually done as part of preparing for a debt issuance. I know the reading agencies I've talked with and met with have usually required that you have proof to kind of show them a documentation of the cash flow projections into the future.
Sorry, Harry.
And so that's my input.
Thank you for listening. Thank you. We haven't started so well on the timing. So please, there may be a lot of people that want to talk and we can't be here all night.
I'll come in under the wire. Karen Eishen, Pace Alliance, 818 Washington Street. Mayor, thank you for clarifying some of those debt numbers for everybody. That was very helpful. I want to introduce just a new word, investment. Debt, yes, but it's also investment into the community. And those numbers represent a lot of things that we get to enjoy here as well as new employees to this community. The Pace Alliance represents nearly 300 businesses. And one of their main concerns is having workers. So we need to bring people to this community. Our office tours some of those candidates that the corporations are interviewing. And nine times out of 10, they will always ask if we have an indoor rec center or a YMCA. They are from communities smaller than Pella, larger than Pella, and it's an expectation. Now, is that going to make or break their decision? There'll probably be a few factors in that, but that will help attract, let alone all of the revenue from different tournaments and the visitors coming in. So I would urge you to carefully study those debt, those investments into the community, and make those. That is what's going to continue, really developing Pella and making it a better community than we have today. Even though we have a great community, it can always be better. So thank you very much.
I'm Patty Van Zany. I live at 1117 Big Rock Park Road, and I'm board chair of the Friends of the Pella Community Center. I want to speak in support of moving forward with the plans to renovate the Pella Community Center. I would like to quote Mayor DeWard. "We can't underestimate the importance of the arts and cultural opportunities made possible in our community center. These programs expand our horizons and support high-quality life of Pella residents." I want to thank the mayor and the council for moving forward with preserving and plans to renovate the historic community center. The citizens of Pella in 1913 had the progressive foresight and vision to build the first high school to help make Pella a modern city for the 20th century. The Pella High School building was a linchpin for training and nurturing the leaders and citizens of Pella for the 20th century. And we are grateful that the current leaders of Pella have the foresight and vision to take Pella into the 21st century by building on the legacy that was left us with this incredible historic building, this treasure from Pella's past, and moving forward to make it a resource for Pella's future. I want to quote John Ruskin. "When we build, let us think that we build forever. Let it not be for present delight nor for present use alone. Let it be such work as our descendants will thank us for. And let us think, as we lay stone on stone, that a time is to come when those stones will be held sacred because our hands have touched them. And that men will say, as they look upon the labor and wrought substance of them, 'See, this our fathers did for us.'" Thank you.
We were getting started first, so thanks. I'm doing this. My name is Dan Zylestran. I am the head of schools at Pella Christian. Thank you, council, for all your work. I can't speak to the financial details of the proposed rec center, but I can talk about the needs of our school as we grow. We have one gym at our high school. That meets our freshman JV and varsity teams all practice at all hours of the day. Having a rec center down the road with some extra gym space sounds like it'd be a great thing for Pella Christian. And those are things that could be used really in all the schools here. So as we look forward, those growth and those aspects, you know, we've not shared resources between the schools that well. But, you know, I see this as something that could benefit Pella Christian and the other schools as well. So I thank you for pursuing this and continuing down this path.
Eric Van Clay, 1361 Northwest Drive. I'm also the athletic director at Central College. I often introduce myself by saying my wife and I has claimed the fame as we lived in all four time zones our first four years of marriage. We have been in Pella for 17 years because I've never found a place in this country that offered more opportunities to raise kids and to live in as Pella. I recruit kids from all over the country, near and far, who are blown away with the opportunities at Pella and the people in Pella. They've never seen people this nice, this caring, and opportunities like this. I would echo what the administrator from Pella Christian said. I would echo what the administrator from Pella Christian said. We really view this at Central College as just another opportunity to expand that. I frequently get asked the question, "Why don't you have a swimming and diving team?" Because we don't have, we don't have a pool that's suitable for that. Similar to what he'd echoed earlier, I look at this as an opportunity to share resources and be efficient with dollars rather than separating those. I think those extensions between the community, the college, and the people in that only enhance that, and I really commend the committee here for looking into that. I also say, as the parent of three children in this community, one is of which is a daughter, I think having opportunities that aren't sports specific where you need to be so tall or so fast or so strong to participate in, but sports like swimming that accepts all body styles, and I kind of smile a few of the ladies in here that I've swam many laps and run into in the morning because there's not enough pool space at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning. I see you smiling. And us having to learn to be good partners and good teammates at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning because there's not enough space for us. So it's not just youth oriented. It's every bit the other end of the spectrum where we're limited on opportunities during the winter, and this is just an opportunity for us, I think, to grow closer as a community. So I know these are hard decisions. I know there's budgets and finances that have to be looked at closely. I look at those daily. I would just ask that you move forward with this and look at those carefully and continue to serve the Pella community.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hoytink. I live at 2605 Himmel Drive. My wife and I have four children, ages 11 to four. I work professionally in this community, and my wife and I are Central College graduates. We moved to Pella nine years ago from the Phoenix area. I grew up elsewhere, and I've lived in multiple other communities. Through my current role, I'm heavily involved in several business associations and organizations that take me into communities throughout the state. With that experience, I am so grateful for the city we have and the leadership we've had. The progress and development that we're doing here in Pella is a light that others are looking to from all four corners of the state. Every leader I talk to wishes they had the opportunities in the community that we have here. I came tonight to make sure that you know that I, like others, really support the proposed rec center. My wife and I have coached several youth activities in town and have been spectators and others. We spend countless hours at that sports park. And by the way, because of that sports park, you're talking to the head coach of the 10A Elite State Champion Team for the City of Pella. I can't imagine a scenario without that sports park with three kids playing on a field at once scattered throughout town. I'm able to coach a practice, coach a girls' team, and watch another girls' team in the same night, just like many other families are. Families like me and families like the kids I coach will benefit greatly from this opportunity. And like everyone else, I am concerned about taxes and I am concerned about spending, but it takes investment. And when I look out at that sports park and I travel around to different places, we are right on the cusp of being the premier youth sports place in this area. And this rec center, I believe, will take us over the top and bring hundreds of people to this community on a near weekly basis to play basketball, to swim, to play volleyball, to play baseball, to play softball. This is a good deal for the City of Pella, and I really encourage you to look hard at approving it.
Keith Hoxberger, 224 South Street. So there's a lot of talk about borrowing money. There's a lot of talk about different phases. If you guys go forward with this, tell the people one thing, what is the end date? Is there going to be an end date to all these bonds and borrowing and phases? Or is this going to go on for infinity? So as you present this, please give us an end date.
Anyone else? All right, we will move on. So we, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Brandon Horace Banster, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rayner Horst? Yes. DeAnstr?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, public hearing regarding an application to rezone property along Eagle Lane from Community Commercial to Limited Light Industrial. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and for those watching at home on Pella Fiber and in attendance, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. Tonight's rezoning request comes to us from the ETI group. The rezoning that we are considering is approximately 11 acres, and specifically what's being proposed is to rezone the property that's highlighted in yellow up on the big board and just to orientate everyone. We have Highway 163 located right here. Pella Christian is located, their campus is located right over here. And the area that we're talking about is this yellow highlighted area that's just shy of 11 acres. And what the developer's requesting to rezon the property to prompt is from CC, which is Community Commercial, to M1 Limited Light Industrial. And we do have a description of the M1 district up on the big board as well. But again, this is light industrial to the city zoning codes. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, anytime that we do have a rezoning, it's always important to take a look at the current zoning that surrounds the property, and specifically what we're going to check for, what we check for at the staff level, is to make sure that we don't have spot zoning. So that would be a zoning proposal that's inconsistent with the current uses of the property that surrounds, with the request that they developed or the applicant in this case. So when we look at this 11 acres that we have here, it's currently zoned CC, and what we see is CC is right up here to the north. And we also have Limited, they're specifically requesting to go to Limited Light Industrial, which is M1. And we have M1 that's abiding the property. So from a strict spot zoning standpoint, we do not believe there's any spot zoning that's associated with this request. It's just an extension of the Limited Light Industrial zoning district that we're currently, that's currently in place and that currently abuts this property. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned and the future use land map, what we have is a mixed use proposal that was thought of in 2014 with plan, and specifically, as you'll see, we have a little bit of everything up on the board. We have some proposed parks and rec, and we also have high-density residential, we have commercial, and we also have light industrial. And so overall, at the time, once again, the future use land map is just a guide from the standpoint that propose some sort of mixed use development that included Limited Light Industrial. So when looking at this and also considering what the current zoning is and what the developer's proposing, we do believe that the proposal does align with the city's comprehensive plan, and at least that's the opinion of staff on the matter. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. I believe we've covered this now with this. Because we believe that the proposal is in alignment with the city's comprehensive plan, we also have looked at it, and we believe it's just an extension of the industrial zoning that currently exists on this larger parcel, which is just right around 39 acres. We are recommending approval of this request. And, Mr. Mayor, we'd also like to point out that the planning and zoning commission didn't consider this matter at their August 28 meeting and unanimously approved this request. And we do have the developer requests this evening for waiting of the second and third waitings of the zoning ordinance on this one. Council decided on that matter, but as far as the first reading is concerned, staff is recommending approval this evening, and would be more than happy to answer the questions the mayor or council may have on this matter.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Any written comments, Mandy?
Just the request from the developer for the waiver, the readings.
Okay. Council, any questions?
I was just going to ask Jerry, it looks like there were seven neighbors that were contacted. Was there any concerns from any of them?
We had no other public comment.
Okay. All right, any member of the audience have a comment about this? This is a public hearing, so any comment from the public? All right, and I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Still moved.
Banster Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the ordinance number 1032, entitled an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the M1 district to include the property generally located along the west side of Eagle Lane and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance number and the date of this change on the official zoning map, and this is the first reading. Assume nothing to add, Mike?
You're correct, sir.
All right, can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Ford.
Brandon Horace Ford, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
So in light of no concerns from any of the neighbors, I'm going to move that we suspend the rules, waive the second, third reading.
Support.
Okay, the movement supported to suspend the second, third reading of the ordinance. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Again, motion for approval of the ordinance, of the ordinance number 1032. Hopkins Ford, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
He said yes.
He said yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6619, entitled Resolution Conditionally Approving a Preliminary Plaid for Quarter Business Park Subdivision. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those in attendance. Once again, I'd like to request the review report for the presentation this evening. This resolution, as Mayor DeWard stated, conditionally approves preliminary plaid that was submitted by the ETI, the parcel that we just talked about, for a portion of which we're rezoning or was just rezoned by the Public City Council on this. And so what we have again up here, Oscar Loses Treeville, Highway 163, the Pella Christian campus is over here, and the preliminary plaid that we are considering this evening is for 39 acres. We have three developmental lots that are being proposed, the plaid with one outlot. Now, it is important to note, whenever you hear the term outlot, what that means is there's delayed action as far as zoning approval or preliminary plaid approved subdivision approval on the matter of the developer to develop this lot to take additional action by the Pella City Council. I would also be remiss if I didn't explain the preliminary plaid that we're talking about this evening is usually the overall game plan for the development. Often developments are kind of phases, and you hear the term final plaid. Final plids are considered by the Pella City Council once all public infrastructure is installed on the development. Oftentimes, they're segments of the overall plan that's being proposed by the developer. So again, we're considering a preliminary plaid this evening, and the total acreage that we have is just over 39 acres. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Once again, we just have a view of what's being proposed by the developers, and once again, we have three lots and one outlot that is being proposed by the developer this evening. Okay. Now, as far as our findings on the matter, some of these items largely resemble what we found in the rezoning request submitted by the developer in summary. Staff finds that proposed preliminary plaid this evening meets the zoning code requirements, but also meaning that we believe is in alignment with the city's comprehensive plan as well. Now, as far as the conditional rezoning, we still think that that applies this evening because technically the zoning ordinance is not official until it's been published in our official newspaper, which is the Marion County Express Audit as well. So we are still recommending conditional approval of this plaid, and with the condition being that the property is rezoned by October 2, 2024. So hopefully we'll be able to get that notice published before then as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, before I go on, staff is recommending approval, but once again, the planning and zoning commission did review this matter, and they still had, they had a very similar recommendation, conditional approval of the preliminary plaid with the condition being that the property needs to be rezoned by the Pella City Council. So with that, we'd be more than happy to answer the questions the mayor or council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can we get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Support.
Hopkins Ford, any discussion? Just a question, so the outlot, does that mean it could later be divided?
Yes, that's exactly. In order for the developer to divide the outlot, we believe it would take additional review by the planning and zoning commission as well as the Pella City Council. And advantage to the developer, if they don't have plans for the outlot, they're not installing any public infrastructure that may be required, they can defer action on it until they have a known quantity of money as well. So, and that's our understanding why it's being deferred.
Okay. Anything, anyone? All right, all in favor of the resolution, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to resolution number 6620, entitled Resolution Adopting Amended Job Classification Scale and Executive Pay Plan. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. And as Mayor DeWard stated, what's being proposed this evening with this resolution is an amended job classification scale as well as an amendment to the executive pay plan. We'll briefly go over the proposed changes that we have this evening. The first item on board was that we simply have a classification change or rather a correction to the police sergeant position that was previously identified as an exempt position. This resolution corrects it to a non-exempt position. The second item that we have is for a new electric distribution superintendent position. During the Conray compensation review, it was originally graded as a 21. Upon further review by Conray, it was determined that it be more moderately graded from a grade to a grade 22. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. The last item that we have is a proposal from city administration, and what we're proposing to do with this is with our vacant HR manager position as well as the city clerk position, we are proposing the same amount of manpower be dedicated to both the city clerk and HR functions, but what we're proposing to do is combine those two positions and create the city clerk human resources director. The city clerk human resources director would be added to the executive pay plan, and the second item that would supervise is the human resources journalist position. This new position would report to the city clerk and human resources director, and I believe Conray determined the gradient on the position is grade 17 as well. So with that, it is important to note that the proposed organization change at city administration, it was reviewed by the city's legal council as well. But those are the three changes that are being proposed by staff this evening. And Mandy, do we have any additional items on this item? With that, we'd be more than happy to explain this resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Support. Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Rayner Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstr?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6621, entitled Resolution Approving Change Order Number One, File Quantity Adjustment Miscellaneous Items, Accepting the Public Improvements for Prairie Street Improvements Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item, and what we have this evening is acceptance of the Prairie Street public improvements. And this is one of the projects that was referred to earlier this evening. It was a former gravel road that was recently upgraded to what we call officially a urban cross-section under the city code, it's public work standards. There are most people just call it regular city street. You can see the street that we have up there as well. Now, the contractor on the job is Blommer's Construction on this, and so this project was originally approved during December of 2022 and has been in use for some time. Now, we do have a description of the project up on the big board. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the change order that we have this evening, it's actually a decrease overall that has two components. The first component is a decrease on the job and its final quantities adjustment. And any time you hear a final quantities for adjustment on a project, what that simply means is what the contractor, we're doing a reconciliation between the materials for the job that the contractor bid on the job and what was actually placed in the ground. In this case, we have a reduction of $28,311 for quantities of production. And we also had minor change order increase on the sanitary sewer service relocation that was an increase of roughly $2,000 on the job. So we started off with an original contract on this job of $914,000. The change order that we are considering this evening is $26,311 in the essential reduction. Council were to approve this resolution, accepts the project and also proves the change. and also approves the change order. We'd be left with a final contract amount of $888,275 and fifty cents. Now, as far as the engineer on the project, it was guarded and associates, they believe that the project was completed in accordance with the plans and specifications approved by the Public City Council. Staff also believes that as well. We are recommending approval of the resolution, which approves the change order, and also accepts improvements. And just to orientate everybody when we talk about Prairie Street, project itself is this red highlighted area. South Street is up here to the north. Truman Road is over here. And what we have here is actually the new fiber, Pella Fiber Electric Distribution warehouse that we have over here, as well as electric distribution facility right here. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation this evening. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can we get a motion for approval?
Still move.
Support. Randor Horst, DeAnstruck. Any discussion? I now know why when you start this presentation, you put a big emphasis on "happy," because it's finally a reduction in cost.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion?
Not only is it a reduction in cost, it is a huge improvement for Ward One. Very grateful. It's a long time coming, but very much appreciated.
I was just gonna check and see if Linda noticed that I was done or not.
Oh, I did. DeYoung's up at one day. So, yeah.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Did we lose you, Mark? I still lost him. Is he on there?
Got me now?
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Just say yes.
Yep.
Motion, motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6622, entitled Resolution Approving Engineering Services Agreement with Garden Associates, LTB, for the Broadway Street Reconstruction Back to Brick Project. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor Ward stated, with this resolution, we do approve Engineering Services Agreement, Garden and Associates, for the Broadway Street Reconstruction Back to Brick Project. And the segment of the street that we're talking about is the red highlighted street up here on the big board. So Independent Street is located up here to the north. University Street is right down here. The Central College Campus actually includes both sides of this proposed project. So the new South Vane Development that we have up here is actually located right in this area, right here as well. So when we talk about the Back to Brick Street project, what we're talking about is actually installing a concrete or urban cross-section street. It'd actually be five inches, five to six inches, Danny, correct me if I'm lower than a regular city street, just to announce that we can put the brick on top of the street, but it would be a brick street is what's being proposed. And this would be consistent with prior council's directives on converting streets back to brick, these asphalt overlay streets, that when they are replaced, that we consider back to the brick option on it. Now, we do have a description of the project up here on the big board as well. We talked about the streets, but this would also include all associated utilities, including water mains and so on. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the total project that we have with it is we're looking at an engineering services agreement of just over $160,000, which includes both preliminary and final design, as well as construction administration. So when we talk about construction administration, that means once the project is designed, city council approves the construction contract, we have an engineer on site evaluating the contractor to make sure that they're actually doing their best ability to make sure that the contractor is installing the public improvement in accordance with council approves plans and specifications. Now, as far as the construction cost estimate, it's right at $965,000. And we are proposing to use tax increment financing funds from the public business corridor to finance this project. And the tentative timeline that we have with the project is to start the project in the spring of 2024. And we're going to meet that goal deadline date. So we're talking about starting construction in spring of 2024. What Danny would likely tell us is hopefully that project will be done before the snow flies in 2024 is what the goal would be. But since it's about Central College Campus, it's going to take a lot of them to just have a work. We have a great relationship with Central College. We'll keep in close communication with them. But looking to begin this project, the first step in beginning the project is to approve an engineering services agreement, which is being proposed with this resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Still move.
Support. Randor Horst, Hopkins. Any discussion?
Is the street we're laying underneath the brick full urban cross-section? So you do a street and you're decorating with brick?
That's correct.
Can the future brick break down or decide brick is no longer on our streets? You could just overlay and use that street? And is that usually a decent shape after?
This street today, we believe there's brick underneath it, but an overlay on top of it today. So we'll salvage those and clean them up for a future project.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6623, entitled Resolution Approving Architectural Engineering Service Agreement, Clinger and Association Associates for the 215th Main Street Remodeling Project. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to explain this item. And before starting on this, when we talk about 215th Main Street, we want to make sure any council's well aware of this. But again, I'd just like to emphasize for those who may be seeing this project for the first time, this property was generously donated to us from the community by the management organization. We're extremely appreciative of their gift to the city of Pella. Now, with that being said, at 215th Main Street, we talked quite a bit about what the plans are before the building. And again, we're talking about this evening, this resolution would be to actually start the remodeling of the building. And in essence, what we're proposing with the existing facility that exceeds 215th Main Street would be to use this for city offices. And specifically, what we have here is that we're proposing to move our Planning and Zoning Department to this building. And we also believe the majority of the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, not just the commission, but the boards that report to the Planning and Zoning Department, and Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's even four or five, there's numerous, believe that their meetings, most of them could occur in this building. We're also proposing to move the Iowa driver's license station that's currently stationed at the community center to this building. And then again, I'd like to also mention, as we consider the city's long-term facility plan this evening and talk about remodeling the community center later in 2024 into 2025, we believe that we will have to relocate the administrative services department of community services to a new home. Hopefully, the goal is, is to have this project done by the time that project starts, and we'd be able to relocate the community services department. And then also, if we're looking for, it's quite possible, we'll need to look for a new home for the city's art center programs. Once again, this facility is big enough, and we believe we can also temporary locate the city's art center programs while the community center is being renovated. So those are the brief summary of the uses. So let's go ahead. And we do have up here what's involved in this project. Now, as far as the agreement that we're considering this evening, it's a not-to-exceed agreement totaling $111,500. And it is with engineering associates on this. It is important to note, as far as the contract is considering this evening, what's being recommended is that the mayor would have authorization to sign the contract once the city attorney has approval of the contract. And just to explain that item, quite often, engineering contracts that are submitted to the city, there's usually a considerable amount of dialogue that happens between the engineering firm and the city attorney on matters. And we haven't quite wrapped up those negotiations yet, but they're substantially complete. We're arguing over the, kind of arguing, negotiating over the finer details on this as well. We know the time is of the essence. We anticipate those negotiations will be completed soon. So that is the caveat that we have with the resolution this evening. And Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to explain any items or explain this item, whether the council would have questions.
Okay, thank you. Mike, can I get a motion for approval?
Still move.
Support. Hopkins, four. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to abstract of Bill's number 2136. Can I get a motion for approval? Still move. DeAnstruck, Hopkins. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randor Horst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Council member, any council member have any other business that needs to be addressed this evening?
I was just gonna bring up two quick things. One is, and Bruce can help out, the city got an award from the Pella Preservation Trust for the Big Rock Park. I think the landmark category, was that right? So credit to Jeanette for accepting that on behalf of the city for the awards banquet that they had. And then also, I think it'd be good for everyone to know that our own esteemed mayor got an important award into the Hall of Honor of Central Athletics for his years and years of volunteerism there. And that's a big honor and a big commitment he's given. So I'd like everybody to give him a round of applause.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It is quite an honor. You weren't supposed to bring it up. Okay, so moving on, at this time, we have an opportunity for public input from any member of the public on any other business. So if you do, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
I timed it. I'm good.
Good.
Anna Rupert, 1104 Peace Street. The city of Ankeny is currently considering allowing backyard hens. I've been told by our zoning department that whatever Ankeny adopts will likely become the springboard for any code that Pella might adopt. Now, I just passed out a draft of Ankeny's proposed chicken ordinance. And while there are a lot of good items in there, I believe that if we applied this same code word for word in Pella, we would only be permitting hens in theory. Too many residents would be disqualified by the minimum quarter acre requirement that Ankeny last night voted to move forward. But how many plots in Pella do we know of that have that much land? Granted, there are some. But if there's already requirements in place about property setbacks and permission from neighbors, do we really need a property size requirement if there are people keeping chickens on city rooftop terraces or balconies? That's kind of an extreme example, but it just goes to show that chickens do not require much space. A quarter acre is 10,890 square feet. According to Murray McMurray Hattery, one can keep 10 small, 6 medium, or 5 large birds entirely confined in a 5 foot by 10 foot coop. That's only 50 square feet. And that's even less if they're allowed to free range in the fenced-in backyard during the day. One of the compelling reasons that I believe this administration would be interested in permitting chickens is the fact that they are a selling feature to the young urbanites that Pella employers are looking to attract. Pella realtors will confirm this, a house that the chicken coop sells. I'm a millennial, and I've been part of the urban homesteading movement for the past decade. Today, the majority of homesteaders, hobby farmers, or those interested in reclaiming lost old ways of life is booming among millennials like myself and Gen Z. This is a documented trend. Millennials are the largest generation in the U.S. workforce. We grew up with the explosion of technology so naturally as we crave the opposite. We want connection to our food, to our local community. We care about environmental sustainability and living authentically. There is a growing interest in self-sufficiency as people seek to return to their rural roots, take ownership in the food that they eat, and get their hands dirty. And that is why I think chickens would be such a small, good thing for Pella, a way to attract and retain residents who otherwise are looking to move to the country where it's both more affordable and accommodating to this lifestyle. This is a way that we can compete with surrounding towns and have an advantage, because Pella is kind of the best of both worlds, a blend of small-town life with bigger amenities. By encouraging small-scale homesteading in our own backyards, we are investing in future generations. We are teaching kids skills about resiliency, how to shorten the food cycle chain, and food supply chain, sorry, and offering our children more autonomy over their food source than we've ever known growing up in a world of big processed food. It's also a great way to demonstrate proper stewardship, right? To quote Wendell Berry, "The earth is what we all have in common." Chickens eat our food scraps, therefore reducing waste. They then provide us nutrient-dense eggs, all the while creating the super-rich fertilizer for our gardens, working to add nutrients to our soil, which then grows more nutritious and vibrant foods that we can eat. It's a wonderful beneficial cycle. So as we wait to see what Ankeny will adopt, let us be thinking now of whether or not we want to limit these benefits to just a handful of our own residents. Personally, I think if you're gonna get chickens, get chickens in every yard. Thank you for your time.
I don't know if I get to comment or not, but it is a quarter acre in there. Yes, she said. I'm interested, happy.
Karma Rithen on 300 West Fifth Street, I think where I live at. First of all, I have a couple things about the fiber hookup, mentioning that it's bringing, you know, a lot of money and stuff to town. But we hooked up because it was free, but we're not paying to have it regular. So I don't know what the percentage of the people actually got the hookup that are not paying. So there's a difference. Second, the sidewalks are poorly in poor shape. The one that I tripped on, the brick, has not been repaired yet. It's been two years. And that's uptown on Franklin in front of the Cocket Spill. You know, and there's other cracks. So I think our money that we so-called have should be used for the sidewalks, for safety, for people that come from out of town, or those that live in town and like to walk. The last thing is, we live on the edge on University Street and West Fifth, and we have a lot of flags in our yard, the orange ones, and then there's yellow ones. And they've been in our yard for weeks. And also, there's an orange cable that is on University Street, across our street, going all the way up west toward the dam, you know. Anyway, it's been laying across the street for quite some time. It's a safety hazard, and I'm sure you see it when you're walking. And I have seen kids pull it out toward University Street, which is not a good idea. And you have bicyclists that go by. So I don't know how long that is allowed to be there, and also, how long our flags are going to be in our yard, because it affects mowing. They're in the way, and there's several. And when you want to build an addition to your home, you have to get a permit, and you're allowed only to have that permit so long. So why are the flags in the yard longer than what you can have your permit? Anyway, I don't know who takes care of that, but I just thought I would bring it to your attention. Thank you.
My code being 218, Peter. Concerning the state of the soccer complex, it's poor, to say the least. I think, Mr. Mayor, you've been out there recently.
I did, Friday night.
Yep.
I walked the ground.
Yep. And several holes that are big in the, where the heads are supposed to pop up for the irrigation system, which, is that functional again or not?
Jeanette would be a better one to ask that question of, but I don't know where we're at.
Okay. Anyway.
Do you want the answer or not?
No, just, you can get back to him, yeah.
Okay. When my son Benjamin plays there before 2010, it was a very nice complex, other than the huge crown in the field, which needs to be planted. Right now, it's an eyesore. I had to, this past weekend, we had to have our game moved from the east field to the upper field for the past two weeks. This past weekend, I had to help a lady up the steep bank to go up, because she just had quadruple bypass, unable to get up there. There needs to be sidewalks so that all of the fields are attainable to everybody. And what you have in front of you are pictures of the holes that are there, and the dead grass that is there, and also the picture of the crow's nest, which has a padlock on it. which has a padlock on it, on the door, but if you go around the backside, the chain link fence is down, you can still go up and get hurt. That picture is also in there. Final picture in there shows the crown of the field. My wife took a picture of me standing across, and you can see, just below my waist down, it's not visible. Makes it kind of hard to watch your kid play soccer when you can't see his feet. The backstops behind the two main fields, behind the nets, are starting to lean pretty bad. I would like to see those straightened, and maybe the design changed a little bit, put wings on them so that they don't have that tendency to lean. The drinking fountain out there is broken. The bathrooms could use work. They go to automatic flush, and automatic sinks would be nice. But what mainly needs to happen is, the irrigation system needs to be fixed. The crown of the field needs to be removed so that we can play soccer as is. We're not asking for super plush fields, but we are asking for playable fields. In a society that is lawsuit happy, we're gonna have a broken ankle in those holes. My first practice, I had a kid step in it. He just said, boy, this is dangerous. He's twelve years old, he gets it. But his entire foot was in the hole, that's how big it is. So I asked the council to consider taking better care of that and making it a pride for people to come. The parents that come to watch your kids complain excessively how poor the fields are and what a crappy complex it is. Thank you.
I'm bringing up a name into the team here. My husband is very factual. I hear the gossip on social media, and I'm sitting, he's coaching, I'm sitting with the parents, the moms, who are complaining, who are worried about their kids being hurt. Soccer isn't a big deal in Pella for a lot of people. Our soccer club does travel Kansas City, we travel to other towns here in Iowa. While we're there, we're spending money at hotels, we are going shopping, we are going to restaurants, we're spending our money. When people come to Pella, a lot of people say, wow, this is what they've got for a complex. Yeah, this is what we got, folks. So the conditions at the Pella Soccer Complex are not safe and not acceptable for players. The irrigation system, which does not work and has not worked for quite some time, has left large holes giving a perfect opportunity for injury. This isn't speculation, this is proven. And like the pictures on there, we measured with tape measure, a lot of them are five by five. So those are pretty, I could probably stick my foot in there. Spring twenty twenty-three, Pella High utilized the complex for a few games, in which kids did end up getting hurt and on crutches. One senior had to sit out and miss the senior year of games because his injury was due to a hole. Pella residents are choosing to bring their children to other towns to play because it's very clear that soccer isn't a priority for kids when Pella has a complex like this for the kids to play on. Is spending money to fix the complex cheaper than lawsuits due to injury? I did have a friend who said if her child gets hurt, she will be suing the city. And like my husband said, while there is an irrigation system, it doesn't work. The pump that is in that body of water, collecting water, the pump is broken, I don't know how long it has been broken. So the irrigation heads flood the holes, cause mud. And the text that we got September eighteen validates that. Somebody pointed out, there's a mud puddle, it's not safe. So the city did, somebody listened, it's going around Facebook, it's on social media, that text validated that. The watchtower is safe, yes, or is unsafe. There is a padlock, so you can't enter the stairs, but even a grown adult can enter the side where all the fencing is taken down. It's also brought to my attention that Rush Soccer does pay a fee to the city for maintenance. What's being done with that money? If the complex was given to the city, which the family is here who donated that land, where is that money going? Is Sunken Gardens or West Market Park and other parks, are they paying to be maintained, be maintained? And are they being maintained? What about the revenue that could be brought to town with a nicer complex? We could host tournaments, and that's not possible right now. We're not asking for a state-of-the-art facility, we're asking for repairs to be done to make the complex a safe place for all to play on and a facility welcoming and capable for fans of all ages and physical conditions. We're asking the complex to be restored to a condition in which it is safe and that Pella can be proud of. We live in a town which has college soccer, yet we can't provide decent complex for the youth to learn the sport safely. Pella can do better than this. Fundraising efforts have been shut down because the city doesn't want to hurt the feelings of generous family who donated the land years ago. While the soccer club shouldn't have to do its own fundraising to take care of something that belongs to the city of Pella, this also throws a flag. If Rush was told they can't fundraise because it will hurt the feelings of those who gave the land and the complex, how about the family seeing the condition of the city has left the complex deteriorate due to the lack of maintenance and funding with tax dollars? While I could go on and on about this issue, I would like to allow the particular family who donated the land to speak for themselves on what the city has, has done to run the soccer complex into the ground for the generations of soccer players and fans, in which was brought to bring joy to all that enjoy the game. While I am for the new rec center, I am also about restoring what we have. What are we going to do with that land that was given? Are we going to let it just grow weeds like it's doing right now? Or are we gonna take care of it? And if that family would like to say anything further, I would like to invite them up now.
Hi, my name is Sandra Blanchard. I'm eleven eleven Park Lane, and I represent the family. My dad was Genevene White, and the field is named the Genevene White Field. He had the vision to actually start soccer in Pella and kind of find the field and, and work on that. And when he passed away, they named it after him. So I think the main thing is, we just want a safe place. Again, we're not asking for a lot of nice things, but I think a safe place is really nice. My son, my son and daughter both play soccer. My husband was the Pella Christian High School soccer coach, so very familiar with the field, and it, and it is a very safe, a lot of holes. It's, it's the holes, that's the main thing, that concerns us. I read through the Community Services Board minutes, and I don't think it represents the situation at the field. So what we're asking is a fair, just assessment of what's going on in the field. And as a family, we do support fundraising. I, I think we'd be happy to help with that. You know, other ways, putting up advertising, you know, being creative to help support the field. So I just wanted to clarify that. Questions for me?
Anyone else? All right, then we will move into Policy and Planning to discuss updates on our long-term facility plan. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a recent meeting on this item. Ms. Mayor, the board stated the purpose of this policy and planning session is to provide an update on the long-term facilities plan. And at the end of this meeting, we're actually going to be seeking feedback through the city council. First and foremost, on the community center, we're going to be seeking feedback on the revised construction timeline that we are proposing for, for the facility. For University Street, we have two aspects. We want to talk about the potential phasing to the project, as well as the funding sources being proposed or potentially proposed for the project. And then, as we talk about the proposed indoor recreation center, we have a proposed phase plan for the recreation center. For that particular project, we will also be seeking feedback on going to the next construction, the next phase of the engineering services agreement that we have with Shy Hattery, which is this construction bid phase portion of the project. Estimated fees on that portion of the project is approximately one point two million dollars. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the first item that we have up here is just a very brief update on the community center. If you recall, when we talked about the facility plan at the city council level in April two thousand and twenty-two, we started off with a nest rate of five point five million. Our engineers on the project are currently working on a revised cost estimate for the facility. We believe that we should have that sometime first part of November, potentially mid-November. Once we have that, we will be back and conducting a separate update on the community center for that to talk about those revised cost estimates as well. Now, as far as the proposed funding for this, what we have listed is basically the proposed funding for the, the facility plan, which is a local option law, private pledges, and city contribution, so it's a mixture of items. But again, we're currently at the five point five million, we're sticking with the five point five million that we have. Now, the two items that you'll notice that since, since the April of two thousand and twenty-two, the Friends has approached the city of Pella, and they've proposed actually constructing an elevator addition on the southeast corner of the, of the facility, I believe. So it'd be located right over here, and I apologize, I don't have a picture of the rendering that they're proposing, but it'd be a marvelous addition to the facility. Now, when we talk about the timeline for it, and conversations with the architects, I believe that this work could be done mostly during the winter months on the facility. And so, when we're looking at it, potentially adding an addition on to the project that would be above and beyond the city's five point five million dollars, we're very fortunate to have a group such as the Friends of the Community Center that are willing to try to raise funds for the addition. One of the key items that we have is, was an adequate time period for the Friends to raise funds for that addition. And we've talked internally with the engineer, according to their staff workload, and what we've thought about what we're proposing to have is sometime in the fall of two thousand and twenty-four, having a construction bid date for the project. We believe that would also give the Friends adequate time to raise funds for the elevator addition as well. And then the city council, as far as the elevator addition, what the proposed game plan is, is the base plan, which is the renovation of the facility, would be included in the five point five million. The addition is potentially would be above and beyond, and that would be funds that would be donated to the city of Pella by the Friends of the Community Center. So that's what the rough timeline is. Now, as far as the construction on this, when we talked to the engineers, they thought if we had a fall bid letting sometime in the fall, September, potentially October, work could start in December of two thousand and twenty-four, and would likely extend over twelve months as far as the total project time. A big item that we have, and we at least want to make sure council's talking about this item, because this facility is heavily used, is it's thought right now that the facility will be closed during construction. So from our standpoint, we gotta keep in mind that as far as the city uses, our community services offices are currently located in the building. We potentially may have to relocate those office, office personnel to other facilities. That's why it's important that two fifteen Main Street be renovated, that we have a place for them to be relocated to, as well as the city's art center program as well, will be the two areas that we would have. But we also wanted to make sure that we at least got that out, out the discussion going, and as we started to have future work sessions on the community center, it's gonna be very important that we talk about the closure of the facility, what's necessary, because there's a lot of entities, or there's entities that use the facility on it as well, and we want to make sure that we have a proper notice on it. So tonight's the initial discussion that we want to make sure council's aware that it will likely have to be closed. And that the proposed timeline, we actually started December of two thousand and twenty-four and extend to December of two thousand and twenty-five. Now, with that, I believe I've covered everything, but there's one important thing that we also have with the Friends. If you recall, we said that the Friends would like to try to raise funds for an elevator addition that would enhance the use of the facility, and we think it'd be a great addition to the facility. In order to do that, they've proposed a partnership agreement with the city of Pella, which they would secure naming rights for various aspects of the community center. From city staff's standpoint, I don't believe there's any objection to the partnership agreement. But our thoughts are, is it would be appropriate when we had the revised cost estimates from the engineer, as well as the approximate cost estimates for the elevator addition, really to talk about everything all at once. And so we anticipate there's gonna be another work session for the community center scheduled most likely early November, mid-November, around there where we talked about the revised cost estimates, as well as the partnership agreement with the Friends of the Community Center. So before we go on, is there any questions as far as the community center update? Okay, I'll proceed. All right, before we start talking about University Street, as well as the proposed indoor recreation center, that'd be a good idea for those in attendance, or maybe those watching at home on telefiber. If you haven't seen the overall, what's being proposed for it, we want to make sure that we talked about the location and some, and the location of it, as well as what the Big Rock Center would be. Located very closely to some important community facilities. First of all, when we talk about the indoor recreation center, it would be located in the proposed locations, northwest corner of the Pella Sports Park up here. And as you can see, we have the University Street, we don't have it extended here, but the proposed plan is to extend University Street, which currently terminates at two hundred and fortieth Avenue, extend it out to the county land road, so it'd be two hundred and fiftieth Avenue up here. Now, talking about University Street, it's very important to note that that, the University Street extension has been in the city's comprehensive plan since two thousand and seven. If you go to the city's comprehensive plan, you'll notice that there's usually a section on transportation, strategic transportation projects that the city should consider. The thought was, back in two thousand and seven, that the street extension could facilitate additional development on the city's eastern side of our community. In two thousand and fourteen, the comprehensive plan was updated, and at that time, what you see here is this residential development. We literally copied that from the city's comprehensive plan. Nothing is being proposed at this time, and it's simply what was included in the city's comprehensive plan, but we thought it was good for context of what could potentially occur out there, and what's actually in the city's comprehensive plan as far as future, potential future development. Now, when we talk about University Street, and also the extension of Baseline Drive over here, this would give us second access into the Pella Sports Park, to the Baseline Drive, anyone that's been out to the Pella Sports Complex on a fall day, and particularly during the summer day when it's in use, although it's a very busy place, second access would be very beneficial. And I would also like to point out, with University Street, in addition to being a long-term strategic objective for the city of Pella, that also includes utility extensions as well. And one of the utility extensions that we have with this project is the extension of a utility water main, a twelve-inch water main, so this would be our distribution system. By extending that distribution system out and connecting over to Baseline Drive, we really believe that fire flows on the southeastern side of our community could be increased. And the reason why that's important, and one of the projects that we have here was the Layley North American Corporate Headquarters Project that was recently built in Pella. We believe that it is important as we continue to grow, as industrial development occurs, we will need to extend the city's water distribution system out and create a loop out here so we increase fire flows. That's very important for our industrial base on it, but that's one aspect that's lumped into this project. So when we talk about the estimated cost of seven point six million dollars, we also have utility projects in there that are a general benefit above and beyond the Pella Sports Park, the indoor recreation center as well. And we want to make sure council's aware of this as we talk about that project. Now, as far as the indoor recreation center and what's being proposed, we think it's in a very good location. If you're familiar with the city of Pella, you'll notice that you've been through a single amount of development that's occurred on the western side of the community. We've been very fortunate to have the redevelopment in the downtown, and we also have a new housing subdivision that's being planned up north into town. With the indoor recreation center, we think it's in a good location, a potential release for additional development within our community. If you look at this, it's in very close proximity not only to Pella Community High School, but also Madison Elementary School, I believe, the new early learning center for Pella, Pella Community Schools is located right here. The Pella Christian High School campus is located right down here. Layley's new North American complex is located right over here, and just to the northeast from Mayor Corporation as well. So we think it's a very good location for the indoor recreation center. So with that, I know council's well aware of the location, some of these aspects, but we thought it'd be good just to refresh everyone's memory on the thought and the reason why it's being proposed on the eastern side of town. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the first item that I have, and actually the second item tonight, is to talk about that University Street project. If you recall, when we first talked about this project in April of two thousand and twenty-two, we had an initial cost estimate of roughly, right around six million dollars. The current estimated cost is over seven point six million, which includes utilities, including the sanitary sewer infrastructure for the recreation center. infrastructure for the recreation center. And I want to stress, we're going to continue to look for partnerships on this project because we believe when you look at just this road extension, a portion of the road is in current rural Marion County, and we believe there's governmental entities that this makes logical sense to be partners on the project, and we're going to continue those efforts. But as we try to bring these projects to a decision date for the city, and by we mean by decision date, that would be obtaining construction bids for council to make decisions on these projects, we want to make sure that we have contingency plans in place for funding sources. And so what we're going to talk tonight about is if we're unsuccessful with partnerships for the road project on here, we may need to consider this a pure 100% city of Pella funded project and what we were proposing with that, because anytime the city has road projects, we always have the ability to issue bonds that are technically classified as essential corporate purpose bonds. They're essential in nature because oftentimes their streets are considered essential under Iowa law along with the utilities as well. We believe this project qualifies for that. And so what we have in here is potentially a funding source change to an essential corporate purpose bond. And we wanted to start the discussions early because if you look at our timeline, what the recreation center potentially taking two years to construct, we're going to need to have University Street, the Baseline Drive extension completed before the recreation center opens. And we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, at least talking about the funding source. Now, at the end of the presentation, once I get through my information, we do have Mr. Michael Maloney in attendance tonight to talk about the University Street, talk about the general corporate, essential corporate purpose bond that's being potentially proposed with this project as well. So any questions related to the finance, I will be referring to Michael later on upon the matter. So what we have here, again, is the Baseline Drive, proposed extension as well. The overall project that we have here would be University Street extension. Now, as far as items of discussion to get everything on the table, let's go ahead and second slide for this portion, Mandy. It's important to note that we're currently in the process of acquiring the necessary right of way for not only the street additions, the street extension, as well as those utilities as well. In the event that we do not have all the necessary right of ways secured by the time next spring on the project for a potential bid date, we may have to phase this project yet. What we show here upon the big board is what we call the eastern leg and phase. That's just one option. We could just as easily have a western leg phase for the project as well. But with that, we wanted to make sure that council is aware, or at least talking about, there may be a need to phase this project. And again, what we're trying to avoid is any surprises potentially at bid date or discussions next spring as we progress with engineering on this project. So a key item on this is this project may need to be phased or done into multiple phases. But again, we have the eastern phase, which would involve the Baseline Drive extension. University Street would be extended up to 250th Avenue, and then it would go through the Pella Sports Park. And so once again, the new indoor recreation center would be located right over here as well. Along with that phase one, regardless which direction we come from, we would also extend the city's water main extension. So that would be done in phase one because we believe that's a needed project as well. So again, we do have a description up here, and Mayor Lee for on University Street, that's the information that we have. So before we move on to the rec center, is there any questions on University Street?
Do we, have we secured the right of way on University Street?
We're in the process of acquiring that, and Councilmember Ryan, of course, I think that's a very good question. But I also know that that's also an item that typically we discuss in closed sessions as far as updates on that.
With the water coming in phase one, say, is it coming from the east or is it coming from the west?
It would be, it would be coming from the west on this. And is Mr. Denny Byard in there? Denny, if you could talk a little bit about that water main extension?
Yeah, a few years back, up and down 240, we extended 12-inch all the way up to the Mayor Road. Then we took it to the Mayor Mall all the way. With the Layley project in front of Manats ready next, we took a 12 all the way out to Layley. So to support the rec center building, you know, we're weak at the sports park now. It's fine for a sports park, but any large building needs fire flow protection. So if it coming from the west, that other 12 all the way to Baseline Drive, south to go onto an eight that was put in there with the sports park, that new 12 will provide. And then someday in-house, we'll replace that eight to Manats. You know, none of this was received back in 70 years ago, another 12, which will reduce that whole area, anywhere from the four lane to the Mayor Road.
And then how well serviced is Layley currently and/or if we were to secure another industry? Is there enough flow as is to meet that need? Or is, like you said, it would be beneficial, I want to hear, like, how much more beneficial that would be?
I'll try to answer that, but that's an excellent question. It's something we need to consider. We consider future development in our community. I think the best way to answer as far as Layley, would they like to have fire flows above their current level? I think unequivocally the answer's yes on it. And I think a good goal, what we're striving to do is if you look at the fire flows that are available to the Mayor Corporation, our goal is to make those same level of fire flows available to Layley so we can accommodate future expansion on the development. And memory serves me correct, when we had the Layley North American Complex, I believe the total project was right around 60 acres. I may be a little bit off. The Layley Corporate Headquarters portion was 15 acres. And what was thought at the time is that there may be future business and industry that could locate down there. We believe any type of industry will need those enhanced fire flows for potential expansions. But again, from a fire flow standpoint, our goal is to provide a service level that would be equivalent to the Mayor Corporation. Denny, anything to add on that?
No, that's exactly, without this project, we'd have to replace the eight that goes along Pella Christian on 163 all the way to Manats. So we take the 12 to the 12. We know that according to model would substantially increase it to Layley for other users. So without this project, we may have to look at that if some other new industries come in.
All right. Let's go ahead. Mr. Mayor, if we could, and proceed with the rec center, please. Okay. What we have up here is a brief summary on the recreation center. And I'm going to preface my comments. There was a considerable amount of detail that was located in the city staff memo. It's available on the city's website if you're interested in learning more about the project. And I have the Reader's Digest version up here, and I just want to make sure I did put in all the details on the rec center, but we're going to try to hit the main points. With the recreation center first and foremost, we have the latest color renditions of the exterior of the building as well as the proposed gymnasium for the rec center. But it is important to note when we began this process with the city's long-term facilities plan, we had a plan of $31 million for the building. Current estimated cost that we have and what we're going to be going over there is just shy of $43 million with that. The base plan that we're going to be talking about this evening is a $34.4 million plan. And once again, we have the same funding sources that are being proposed for the community center project. Again, everything's kind of lumped together. The goal with this project, well, actually, I think the tentative goal we talked about at the time was potentially opening this project in the fall of 2025. That was certainly the goal, and we'll continue to press for that as well, you know, making our engineers somewhat nervous by mentioning those dates on there. But the key thing is, if we're going to hit those, we do need to start the engineering and continue on with engineering services with any things, what should I hattery would tell you with the project. So let me go ahead and just try to explain this base plan and the use of alternates and what's being proposed by the city of Pella. Mandy, if we could go to slide 26, I know I'm messing you up here, but let's talk about what was included in the overall plan, that $42.8 million that we have. What was included in the overall plan was four full-size gymnasiums that we have that were located over here, a competition pool, as well as an indoor recreation pool. We also had a large workout area that was located up here, as well as an indoor walking track that you had right over here. And there's numerous other amenities associated with the proposed recreation center. Now, what I'd like to stress is what we're proposing, if the city council moves forward of engineering, is by use of base plan and alternates, everything that you see up here, we will obtain a construction bid for. So the key item is, is when city council has a bid letting on the project, we're going to get construction cost on each and every aspect up here. And the real decision point is going to be when city council receives those construction bids. That's when we'll have to decide what is going to be funded and what is not. Now, what we're proposing this evening is using what's called a base plan and alternates. And Councilmember DeYoung is on the phone, and I'm sure he recalls when we went through the Pella Sports Park, we used a very similar approach to the Pella Sports Park. What we did with this is we identified aspects of the Pella Sports Park that matched the city's funding at the time with this. And then we also listed items with the Pella Sports Park that if we had funding or additional donations came in, that we would fund those, but only if funding was available at the time. And what that allowed us to do was to put a whole bunch of things that was being proposed with the project in there and actually get construction bids. It allowed the city, the council at the time, to make a decision on the project. Now, fortunately with the Pella Sports Park, as that project came in way under budget, and we were able to fund all those alternates with phase one, so it was a very good item for the city. If we did not use alternates, the project would have been significantly delayed trying to determine the financial scope because it is very challenging when you have large projects for it to make sure to reconcile the engineer's estimates, which usually involve several contingency funds between that and city finances. And so by doing that, the way to reconcile that in back with the Pella Sports Park is we identified a majority of that project in what we call the base plan. So that tells the contractor when they submit construction bids that regardless, the city council's prepared to fund these items. We also had a significant portion of alternates. And what that tells the contractor is if funding is available or if the cost is viewed, well, actually, if funding's available, we will do these items on it as well. And so that is the strategy that's being proposed tonight. I just want to make sure council is well aware that we're going to get bids if council proceeds with this project on each and every item that you see up here. So nothing is being reduced. Council will be receiving bids, but we are proposing with some of these items is alternates. So Mandy, let's go ahead back to slide number 25. What we're proposing for alternates for the project is we have one competition swimming pool here, and that would be to also state that it is in a tension as soon as the facility is open and the competition swimming pool would be built, that the current indoor recreation, current indoor pool would be closed at that time. For the base plan, instead of four gymnasiums, we actually have two gymnasiums. So we have a list, two gymnasiums as alternates. Now, this item takes a little bit of explaining up here, what you see up here. If you recall, during the full plan, we had an indoor recreation pool. What we're proposing to do with the base plan is extend all infrastructure necessary for that. In the event that city council wants to build that project in the future, bids, we aren't able to perform with when we receive construction bids on it, but we have to go with the turf. You'll not have to. Turf fields are very popular in the industry. But with the base plan, this would contain all infrastructure for a future indoor recreation pool. But what would actually be constructed if city council does not have funds for the indoor recreation pool would be a turf facility on that. And so that would be used, and it'd be a nice amenity in our community, and we'd have reason to believe it'd be heavily used with this is also the indoor turf facility. We would still have the indoor walking track right here, but it would be reduced. And there'd be no changes to the proposed workout space that is listed right here as well. Now, in addition, there would also be a reduction in parking. For those of you that are council's familiar with the south parking lot would be reduced, as well as we do have a parking lot addition on the northeast side, that would be reduced as well. Now, when we talk about the cost estimates, the full facility cost estimate is roughly $42.8 million. We believe this base plan is somewhere between $34.4 and $34.8 million. We're still working through the items. The financial summary that you're going to see at the end, I have it actually, is $34.8 million. So just don't get too hung up on the numbers right now, but we're going with a higher number when we talk about where we are financially, and that's actually $34.8. But again, what this would do, would allow the city to secure bids on the entire facility. Once council had hard bids in hand, you'd be able to make a decision on the size and scale of this facility that we have. And I want to be absolutely clear that in the event that the city was not able to proceed with the indoor recreation pool, the infrastructure would be installed if that had to be, this project had to be done in phases. In future years, it could be reinstalled at a later date. And at that time, you'd lose the turf field. So this, a good way to look at this, the base plan includes the turf field, or we have an alternate for the indoor recreation pool. Council decides with the indoor recreation pool, that would go right here, and we would not construct the turf field. So again, this would give the city the maximum flexibility from a bid letting perspective. So before I go on, as far as questions on the base as well as the full-size facility, is there any questions on what's being proposed with the base plan and what's being proposed is alternates? Okay. Well, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as where we're at right now, this is an up-to-date snapshot, and I want to preface my comments. This is a fluid situation, and we try to keep up to date with things. And I just want to point out a few things before we get started. To date, we've raised, the city has raised over $15.2 million for the facilities plan, which I think is outstanding. The community's been very generous and very supportive of the projects included, and these have been earmarked for both the Pella Recreation Center as well as the community center. So to date, there's been a significant amount of fundraising that's taking place for this project. What we have listed up here is total funding sources that we have at this time of just over $43.5 million. Once again, we have the base plan for the rec center at $34.8 million. We have our community center at $5.5, and we have the full University Street extension at $7.6. So if you're to ask us as far as the total estimated cost, we're just shy of $48 million is what we have. And we're still roughly about $4.4 million now. From my perspective, the important decisions, the ultimate decisions will be made once the city receives construction bids on the project. But going into that, we need to make sure that we have flexibility to actually proceed with the project, and that's the tricky part right now. If you were to look at these projects, what we have between the community center and the rec center, we believe there's roughly $4.5 million worth of contingency funds in the project right now. So when we talk about being short $4.4 million, technically, that's within the $4.5 million. We are also working on partnership agreements with other governmental entities right now. There's a potential that there may be additional funding sources from other governmental entities. We're still working very hard on that. And I do know that the fundraising team that's been put in place for the indoor recreation center is going to continue their efforts. To date, they've been very successful. So it's very possible if council were to proceed with engineering on this project, that our full funding sources at the time, you would consider the construction bid would be higher than $43.5 million. But with that, we also want to make sure that I tell our staff on this project, these are significant projects. We view them as high priority projects by the Pella City Council. And they're the type of projects you want to measure twice and come once on. And so we're trying to propose and proceed cautiously on this, but I want to stress again, the cities, if they're big projects, it's a fluid situation financially, but we're within the range of contingencies on what we're proposing right now with it. Again, to meet the current timelines or the timelines that council expressed to us, in order to do that with the recreation center, the engineers would need to get going soon with the next phase, and University Street would need to proceed with the next phase as well. So before I turn the floor over to Michael Maloney for any additional comments, I also might state, I failed to mention this, that we have Mr. Ron Kynes from Shire Hattery in attendance. He's the lead engineer, architect engineer on the indoor recreation center project. So if there's any questions on either the recreation center project or financing, Mr. Michael Maloney from DA Davidson is in attendance as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if there's questions for me before we turn the floor over to our three consultants?
Yeah, I'll make some comments, but if you want to have him chime in on the financing or?
I'll let you go up ahead, so you can make that call.
Okay. So, yeah, I want to make some comments and then council. I want to hear from you also. So I kind of want to, what I'd like to do is kind of go back in time a little bit and talk about these projects, talk about all three of them, fill in some histories, because what we're doing tonight is obviously we're at a point in time, we've gotten here, and we need to move forward here. So as Mike said at the start of this, the goal tonight is to have city councils show support to continue with the drawings for the rec center to get it to a bid phase. So let's start with the community center. So I got elected in 2019, in the fall of 2019, took office January of 2020. I did not anticipate having to deal as much as we did with the community center because I think that I, it wasn't totally in tune, but I think everything that need, the community center needs, it needed 20 years ago. And so I don't know why nothing ever happened. I think there was meeting after meeting- I think there was meeting after meeting and talk after talk and I don't know why. But anyway, so shortly after this group took office, we had a plan, we had a policy and planning session about the community center. Again, I didn't have any solid reasons why somebody didn't take care of it years and years ago, but we were faced with it. We can't change history. So what I received for input was there was people that said you'd be crazy to stick money into that old building and yet a very passionate group of people said you'd be crazy not to. So we as a council, we had to make a decision. What are we going to do with this building? There was options to convert it to residences, you know, residents and all that. So I think we did the right thing. I think it was a prudent thing to do. So if you recall, we as a council talked about, or we had a high level plan, what if we put a new performing arts center on the site of the old Second Christian Form Church? That was just, I think that was the wise thing to do. We needed to make a decision, what are our options? So we had someone draw that up. We also at the time, the old Happy Joe's site was available to be purchased, so we looked at that and we also had somebody do a high level, what if we put some kind of performing arts anywhere there? So those two options were considered in making our decision whether to do something with the old building or scrap it and do something. Okay? I think personally, I think that's a very smart and wise thing to do for this city council to do that. So ultimately, and again, it was election time, so there was all kinds of false stuff thrown about, but ultimately what this city council decided, we wanted to save that building. We wanted to save that building and I would attribute most of that to the passionate group of people that kept talking to us about the need to save that building. So we decided as a council, that's what we're going to do. We're going to save the building. We're going to commit five and a half million dollars, which at the time, the, just to replace the infrastructure, just to bring the building back to a nice usable facility. So we had a four point five million dollar estimate, I think at that time. We committed, at the council, we committed five point five million dollars to the project. The Friends of the Community Center had a much larger addition on thing. I don't know what ended up, that maybe was going to be a fifteen million dollar project. So kind of felt like that would be a stretch to get that funded. So that's where we ended up now, and where we are now is the Friends of the Community Center have come up with another plan, which I thoroughly love. We're committed the five and a half million from the city. So funds, if this other project comes in at seven and a half million or eight million, we're going to have to figure, we're going to have to raise the funds privately or to get there. Hopefully I think we can do that. So that's the story behind the community center. That's the process that took place. Again, I think it was a very good process, well thought out process. We explored options, which that's what leadership is all about, exploring options, making a decision. So that's the community center. As far as the road and Mike's presentation as usual is very, very good and very informative. As far as the road, I think Mike made a good point. University Street, that is not just for the rec center. It's been in the comprehensive plan for, since as he said, two thousand and seven. It's, it's been seen as a potential place by put, everybody knows that you put infrastructure in, development happens. I mean, all you got to do is go to Des Moines, I've watched for twenty-five years, they put roads in, development follows. And so we have, we've had some great success on the west side of town with development, with Prairie Ridge, everything that's going up there. I believe putting in University Street will spur development on the east side of town. Just what we, we talked about tonight with a zoning change, you saw in there three lots, there's going to be development there in that, and so that's in the area. So once University Street gets, it gets put in there, I, I've had several developers tell me, we're ready, we're ready to help make something happen. So there will be opportunity for development and so the road is the key to spur that development. But as Mike said, we don't have the, we don't have all the right away secured yet and so we're still working on that. And so perhaps we're going to have to do it in two phases, but that, you know, all those decisions will be made later. And then when we talk about the rec center, the, probably most of you know the history. So back in twenty twenty-one, we came out with a forty-five million dollar facility plan and we decided to move forward. So we had a group of citizens along with our Shire Hattery, spent six months trying to plan a facility. You know, I met with them first time, I said, hey, dream big. So they did, turned into a ninety-five million dollar project. Said, well, we know we can't do that. So they scaled it back and we ended up with a forty-two million dollar project that we currently have. But the other thing I've always said is we will not build more than we can afford. And so with the funding that we have in place, we can afford the thirty-four million dollar facility. So that's why Mike's wise counsel, he's been through projects before. You do it the way we're going to do it. We're going to have a base bid that's thirty-four million dollars, which we can pay for. And then there will be contingencies because I know that we will secure much more funding privately. We've been working on that. I know there's a whole lot of untapped potential there and potentially there's other, as Mike said, there's maybe other partnerships that we could work on to get the funding. So one of the, one of the holes, one of the holes in our funding discussion is Marion County. When we started talking about this, we, we didn't just pull a ten million dollar number out of the hat. We didn't just assume Marion County would do that. We had some conversations with board of supervisors about how they might participate in this project. And so, you know, if you look at it now where we're at with their ten, if we, if we could get their ten million dollars paid, we're pretty close to there to do the, do everything we want to do. But we haven't not been able to secure that. And so Mandy, I have some slides, I had some slides to why, and I need the citizens' appella to understand this because I was very disappointed when we made a proposal to Marion County about the ten million dollars. You know where almost all of the opposition to it came from? Citizens' appella. We didn't, we had citizens speaking against their own community at a, at a board supervisor's meeting. So I think everybody needs to understand what appella contributes to Marion County. And again, we just didn't dream this up. Marion County had been proactive prior to us talking to them. They started with a four point five million dollar assistance for the Prairie Ridge development to spur housing. The county reimbursed the developer four point five million dollars for infrastructure to get that project going because the county had the foresight to understand that we're a rural county, we need to grow to survive. And we, they, they were willing to invest in projects across the county to make that happen. So we had four point five million dollar Prairie Ridge. The next project that took place was Knoxville, the old VA hospital. The county gave Knoxville eleven million dollars for that project. I don't know this for a hundred percent fact, but I don't think one citizen from appella went to that county meeting and said, you shouldn't do this for Knoxville. That's when appella citizens should have been there, if you're going to be against this stuff. I think it was a great idea. I think that we need to work as a county as a whole. But left, so Knoxville to, they secured, the county secured the old VA property, they used that eleven million dollars to clear. What they have now is a really nice hundred and fifty acres in the middle of town. They have developers that are anxious to start, they're starting to sell lots. So it's been, Prairie Ridge has been an unbelievably successful project. There are sixty-one, sixty-one housing permits have been issued out there in two and a half years. That's never happened before. The VA has been cleared, they're selling lots. They also have been working on a two point five million dollar project in Pleasantville. I don't know if they've got, they were still looking for developer, but the county had approved investing two point five million. So if, let's look at, look at Marion County and appella. So here's a, here's a chart that shows how much local option sales tax is generated by communities in Marion County. Appella, we generated, this is the last fiscal year, we generated in appella, three million two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of local option tax. Knoxville generated one point four million dollars. The, the non-incorporated areas of Marion County got one, one sixty-six, or generated one sixty-six and then all the other communities, which would include Harvey, Bussy, Melcher, Dallas, all those communities as a group generated two hundred and nine thousand dollars. There's a state formula and it's a crazy formula, it's based on nineteen eighty valuations, it makes no sense. But anyway, under that formula, appella receives of the thirty-two we generate, we receive, we received one point four million or forty-four percent of that. Knoxville, under that formula, received a million forty-four or seventy-four percent of that. The, the unincorporated areas of Marion County received two million dollars. So Marion County basically got the two million dollars, which is, yeah, I mean, twelve hundred percent. And the other communities in Marion County received, you know, over twice of what they generated. So we get taken advantage of in the counties. We do. And this, I mean, this just shows that. There is a redistribution agreement that we have in place until the end of this year with Marion County where we get an additional eight percent from Marion County. So that bumps us up to about one point eight five, one point nine million. Knoxville gets four percent additional. And so I think after the redistribution, Knoxville is pretty close to one hundred percent whole. They get what they generate. We don't. That gets us to what, sixty percent, fifty-eight percent? We still only get sixty, fifty-eight percent. And the reason that it's, it's unfair is we are as a community and our local employers and our businesses, we're investing all this money, private money, the amount of money private entities have invested is astronomical over this, in this community over the last five years. So we're investing private money, our companies are investing this money and we're growing, we're generating all this tax and everybody in Marion County is sharing. So why wouldn't we go to Marion County and say, help us with this project? Okay? Mandy, you have another slide. So that was based on loss. This was just an example, we said, if, we could have not passed the local option tax. Trust me, there's no, everybody in Marion County was more anxious about that than we were. Because you see what they would lose if appella did not pass the local option tax. So that would have been three point two million dollars not collected and they wouldn't, this is what they wouldn't have got. Mandy, can you go to the next slide? So let's, let's, I talked about the three projects, the four point five for Prairie Ridge, the eleven million for Knoxville, the two point five for Pleasantville. That's eighteen million dollars that the county has committed to these projects. I like it because it's appella on the east end, Knoxville in the middle, Pleasantville on the west end of the county. It's across the county. So based on population, based on population, Knoxville got eleven million, Pleasantville had two point five million. Based on population alone, we should be in line for another eleven million dollars because it'd be fifteen point nine. So when we talk about fairness and we get taken advantage of at the county level, this is why we went to the county with this. Next slide, Mandy. Based on valuation, now this is taxable valuations within each jurisdiction of the three, the three municipalities, based on valuation. So we are sixty-seven percent of the taxable value in Marion County. So based on that, we should be entitled to an extra fifteen million dollars from the county in a bond issue. Okay? And I think we have one more. No, no. Okay, so valuations and, yeah. So we've had lost tax, we've had valuations and we've had population. So that's why we felt good about going to the county and asking them to participate. As everybody that was at the meeting and knows, there was one supervisor, and if you've never heard Mark Ramey talk about why these projects are important to Marion County, you need to, you need to listen to him because he gets it. He is incredibly intelligent and he knows why it's in the county's best interest to support these projects. Unfortunately, we don't have two votes on the, we don't have two votes on the county's board of supervisors yet to get the assistance that we need. But hopefully just, if you look at the numbers, we deserve it. We deserve it. We are the biggest economic driver. And I, I have no interest in throwing that in anybody's face, but facts are facts. And so we will continue to have discussions with county about, number one, we have to renew our redistribution agreement because that expires at the end of this year. So we need to renew that with the county. But I wanted to make sure everybody here saw this and understand why we went to the county. And we didn't even ask for what we should have asked for, we set ten million dollars to throw into these projects. If we had that ten million dollars, we'd be in a much better position to finish them. And so, yeah, that, that's, I think important information. Again, we really don't have representation on the board of supervisors. Nobody on board supervising lives in appella. We have several other instances of appella generating money for the county and not getting our fair share back. Not interested in fighting with anybody, but I just want to make sure you all understand why we went to the county, why we should have been, they should have supported this project, but didn't at this particular time. So the, the goal tonight is for Mike to have assurance that the city council is supportive of continuing the process of getting the rec center project to bid phase. We need to do it now because it's got to move on. Our engineer is sitting here nervous, the timelines I'm giving him, he says if we don't do it now. So that's what we need tonight. So I'm done talking. I need another bottle of water, I talk too much. But so up to you, up to you guys to, thank you Kelvin, up to you guys to chime in with your thoughts.
That'll, yeah. Mike, thanks for your presentation. That all makes sense, the numbers make sense. And I'm in, I'm in support of all of it. I'm.
Potentially. You guys pick up a little there?
I'm in support of all of it. I'm, I would say I'm surprised seeing those numbers from the county, that the county hasn't stepped to the plate and, and, you know, we're benefiting the whole county. Like it seems like there's, there's an opportunity there for them to step to the plate as well as well. But yeah. But, yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Yeah, I guess, I'd have to agree with that. Especially on, on the University Street extension, I, I really don't have any problem with the, the debt for that. You, you look at the price that ATI paid for this, took the land that we just discussed tonight, the reason it was paid for that much is because it was on a paved road. You look at the reason why Layley went to where it was, it was because we in Mahasta County agreed to pave that road to them. And then, I, I think the, the folks that, that have, have kids and grandkids at the ballpark right now, I, I've heard over and over what a disaster it is to get out of there. So, if, if anything is done, and that road has been in the comprehensive plan for 15 years, it's, it's high time we would get going on to help further development on the east side. So, so I, I think that is a, is a critical need for our, our community to keep growing and provide opportunity.
Well, I've been a huge supporter of the community center forever. And I remember under Mayor Mueller, when we took the vote to proceed with the restoration and rehabilitation, and I've remained unwavered in that feeling. University Street has been in the comprehensive plan for quite some time. And the only angst that I have is the securing of the land. And perhaps at some point, I can find that information that I'd like to have on that. And then, on the recreation center, we don't know hard costs until we get the engineering plans. And so, we can speculate and speculate, but until we get those plans, it seems to continually be high in the sky. So, that's where I am on all three things.
I think, I think that's a really good point, what she says, because until we get the bid, bids, you know, it, it might come in at $50 million. Well, you know, then we're stuck, who knows? But I'm saying, we need to get the bids. It might come in at $30 million. You, you know, you don't know that till you have the hard numbers.
Look at Prairie Street.
Yeah.
What happened to it?
Just wrote off $26,000.
Add it, you might be surprised.
I don't have a whole lot to add, other than I, I think all three are, are important for this community. So, I'm in support of moving forward on all three.
One, one, yeah, that's my answer. I have a tendency to go really big picture, so I'm debating whether or not I wanna do that. But I'm not up for reelection, so I get to kind of observe this round. And I wanna, I wanna say, remind us all that we are neighbors, we are community. So, we all pool our things to share amongst others. So, it's not always, well, I'll use this, or I won't use that, so I shouldn't have to pay for it. That's not community. We, we do things in community because it betters the community. I think this certainly, all these projects fall into that. Whether it's a road or a sewer redo on the other side of town that I don't live on, whether it's a sidewalk fix, whether it's a dog park, or whatever it is. And so, I think that's a reminder of me, hopefully it is to others, that this is, we live in community, this is improving our community. The other thing that really jumps out in light of this cycle nationally and locally is, there, there may be different approaches to whatever item is the endpoint, but the other one doesn't necessarily wrong. It is not necessarily wrong if somebody approaches the issue differently than you would. I think that's a really important thing that I'm trying to teach myself, teach my kids, that it's okay for people to think differently than, than I do, than my kids do, or whatever. So, those, those big picture items jump out at me in light of our current cultural moment on a macro level and a micro level. When it comes to these specific projects, I, I feel like they're very straightforward in the way I think about things. Am I gonna use a community center? My kids are kind of past the art center stages. I still have art centered treasures laying around. Most of them include some sort of old record glued to, you know, two by four. But, and it's a beautiful thing, but we're done using it. But this community center need to be redone? Seems like that's a really good idea. In light of how we view ourselves, how we want to be viewed externally, that's an easy one to me. Paving a street that would connect apparently disconnected parts of town, seems like a really logical answer to me. If we move sewer out, it, it helps furnish our industry with the water flow they need. I mean, I'm trying to step back and say, okay, yeah, do I benefit from East University? I, I will, I still am using soccer fields. Will everybody? Maybe not. You don't have to drive that way if you don't want to. I hope you do, it'll be a really nice street. So, that seems to be logical. And then, the rec center, I mean, I think we heard it fairly firmly tonight from some community members, and I hear it on the road, walking about, whatever. I think appella is a beacon, I think we're called to be setting, setting ourselves apart. And I think this rec center would do that. Not even for, I, I think your quote was interesting, cause you were referencing a historical building. But as I was hearing it, I was thinking about our docket and thinking about stacking these bricks. There's not much brick in this proposed rec center. But you're building something not for now, but generations later, that will look back on and say, wow, that, that community had foresight and vision. So, I, in light of all that, in favor of these three projects. And I'm disheartened that, I, I didn't make it to the Marion County Supervisor meeting. But I'm disheartened by the idea that there were neighbors of mine, I don't know who it was, probably not really ultimately important, but they were there, not, not understanding what community is, even though they may not use it or be personally for it. I think that's missing the, the community part of community. And so, that's disheartening to me. I hope we get another shot at the county. I think the numbers are fairly obvious, that we all have to be community in our county. So, long-winded, I'm in support of the projects.
Well said. And one, just one other thing that I forgot historically. So, and we have a bunch of people here talk, talk about the need for an indoor rec facility, and that's something that I heard. Working with Pace since the mid, from 2015, that was a pretty common theme, an indoor recreation facility. We have done a great job with our outdoor facility, with sports park. I know the soccer complex is not as nice as it should be, and certainly, we'll, as the council will be talking about that. But what we're missing is an indoor recreation facility. You think about how our sports teams in this community, both appella, appella Christian, we have state championship, we have tons of, of youth that will use this facility, tons of. It, it's a facility for all ages. You know, I love to walk, when it's 20 below, and I can go there and walk around the track for an hour and a half, that's gonna be pretty nice. But, the point I, I wanna make is, so I heard all of that, and so that was on my priority list when I was elected and took office. But, I also, with that in the background, I knew before we talked about it, I wanted to figure out how we were gonna pay for it. Cause if you can't pay for it, you can't have anything. So, what I did is I went, the first month I was, I was in office, I went and met with leadership and family of appella corporation, Vermeer Corporation, Precision Pulling, Central College, and the hospital. And I, I, I said, I said, what, here's what I think we need as a community. Will you confirm that? And to an entity, they confirmed it big time, that their biggest issue was workforce, attracting and retaining workforce, and that a project like this would benefit them and great, benefit them greatly in that pursuit of workers. And so, I listened, I thought, good. Then my next call back to them was, how are you gonna help us pay for it? And again, before we, before we brought out any kind of a plan, we had $12 million pledged to project, private money. That's a pretty good deal for the community appella, to have private investment come in for a community project and say, we're willing to step up and, and do $12 million. So, the other piece of the financing puzzle at the time was our lost tax revenue, because we had used lost for indoor sports park, or the outdoor sports park, the expansion of the indoor, or the outdoor swimming pool, adding the lazy river and all that a few years ago, and a lot of other projects. So, that had been a fund that was really reinvested into the community. And so, between the combination of the private money, along with the lost tax, I could see a way forward to pay for this. And as the numbers show, we got the plan, group did a great job planning, I got a group that's fundraising, we take, we've taken that $12 million to 15.2 million already, and I know we're gonna go a lot farther than that. My goal is that this project ends up being funded 50% with private money and 50% with local option tax. And I think we'll get there. But, proof will be in, you know, you can say a lot of things, but you gotta deliver. But I feel pretty good that we can get there. So, that's, that's, you know, I think an important part of this whole discussion is the support from the community for the, for a project like this, and how that's gonna benefit, benefit all of us. So, anything else? Any other comments? Well, I appreciate the, we've been here a long time doing a lot of talking, so I think, am I safe to tell Mike that?
Hello? Hello?
Oh, Mark, Mark, you, sorry, sorry, Mark, I forgot about you.
Yeah, I know. I have to confess, I was one of those council members that tiptoed around the community center issue for years. $5 million into that old building? Are you serious? And we just went crawling off into the woodwork and did nothing. And now, we're looking at an opportunity to backpedal, crawl away, drag out, exciting other projects. Can't let it happen. Let's get it going. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So, I think, I think it's safe to say that council is in support of moving forward with all of this. And again, we really, other than, other than committing to keep our engineer going, we're not committing any funds to anything at this point. That'll all be fleshed out when we get bids, when we get numbers, we'll know where fundraising is, we'll know all of that. And again, Mike, we, we will continue to try to, to work with other governmental entities for, to partnership on this thing, so that we get the money that we need to raise, to get it done as well. Okay? With that, I want to take a motion to adjourn. Rand or Horace Hopkins, all in favor, say yes. No, Mandy, please.
Rand or Horace, yes. Hopkins?
Yes.
For, yes. Deion?
Yes.
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 Deion, Carl.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.